Welcome to the business meeting for Wednesday, December 9th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Grace, roll call, please.
Councilman Skorinji?
Present.
Councilwoman Rastanetti?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman? Councilwoman Friedman?
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Technical difficulties, but...
Uh, Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Strawn?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
Uh, that's all seven here.
Okay, we have a proclamation for ottering Majida Rezek, committed by Councilman Burns, Councilwoman Freeman, and Councilwoman Riley. Councilman Burns, can you read it, please?
I'm gonna go ahead and take the lead with this. I will, however, allow Councilman Burns and Councilman Friedman to go ahead and share their remarks before I go into reading the proclamation. So please feel free.
Well, this is Councilman Burns and Majida, who recently passed away due to COVID, was a woman I met, I don't know, 15 years ago or so. And I worked with her on a few different political campaigns, but also I worked with her, she worked with the people in the community that I was also working with, drug addicts and alcoholics, people like that that needed help. And when I first came into office, when I was sworn in, the day I was sworn in, I mentioned the prayer of St. Francis and that I wanted to bring it into my life, that it is in giving that we receive. And Majida, I had, I learned that from my parents. Majida was just born with it. She just had it. She gave of herself freely to everyone that needed help, without ever thinking of herself. So I'm very proud to be a part of this. Thank you.
Uh, this is Councilwoman Friedman. I met Ms. Majida a few years ago, maybe, maybe three years ago or four years ago. And I remember that she was introduced to me as, this is somebody that you need to know. You know, if you are trying to make a positive change in the community, this is somebody that you, you need to know. And I feel incredibly honored to have known her. She was also the first, I think, the first or the second person to give me a hug right after I found out that I had won the election. So I have fond memories of her specifically associated with, you know, where I am now. And it is such a loss to the community that she is no longer with us. But I know that her legacy will live on for a very long time.
So you guys, again, we present this proclamation condemning the life legacy and pioneering service of Ms. Majida Rezak, expressing deepest sympathy to her family and friends upon her passing, and asking that we pause in reflection in terms of handling the business of city council. So that is what will happen while this proclamation is read. I won't read it in its entirety because it is long, because it is a written reflection of the length of time and the amount of dedication she had for this community. And it was not for any particular subset of the community. She would give her last to each and every one of you if you met her. So again, it's, it's a big shift for many. And it also highlights the challenges faced by communities affected by COVID. So again, I'm trying to read it. I'm going to just highlight major portions. Ms. Majida Rezak, affectionately known as Ms. Majida, a dedicated community member and a 12-plus-year member of the Community Development Advisory Committee of the City of Binghamton departed this life causing great sorrow and pain to her family and friends. Ms. Majida Rezak was born in Brooklyn and moved to Binghamton in the early 1990s, where she made her impact and fulfilled her call as a leader in service to the community for decades to come. She worked tirelessly and fiercely as an advocate, especially for those, as Councilman Burns mentioned, who often are the most marginalized and vulnerable. In fact, she was quarantined, but knew her patients or her people that were under her service at opportunities needed her. So she came out of quarantine and gave her life. She was a very, Ms. Majida Rezak was a very loving and supportive mother, grandmother, aunt, sister, relative, and friend to many that knew her. She was devoted to human service and mastered the art of community organizing at every level. Ms. Majida Rezak's contribution to the community included leading multiple efforts on issues such as quality housing, affordable food, accessible healthcare, criminal justice, economic equality, voting rights, racial and social justice. Ms. Rezak was a bridge builder who believed in going above and beyond in order to ensure that residents' rights were protected and implemented. She was particularly involved after she was disheartened by the issue of working families to afford their homes or rent. And she persuaded the National Chairman of the National Community Reinvestment Coalition to come to Binghamton and evaluate and conduct hearings. She elicited the support of attorney's to file the Community Reinvestment Act. Challenges on local and state banks were not complying with this law and were negatively affecting low to moderate income communities' access to resources. This action, along with her persistent advocacy, created local programs for first-time homebuyers and a community bank fund for women and minority businesses. In addition, it led to New York State changing the bank lending practices to better serve all of our community. Her role as a community liaison and educator pulled in resources from the National Center for Community Change to educate the community on how community development block grants should be used in underserved areas in our community. She served several terms, as I mentioned earlier, on the CDAC, working to implement proper use of the CDBG money or the Community Development Block Grant, funding for City of Binghamton, as well as a board member on several organizations, including the Broom County Urban League, the Broom County Reentry Task Force, Citizen Action of New York, the Legal Aid Society, and a collaborator with many organizations and groups, such as the Binghamton Neighborhood Assembly, Boon Pyoga NAACP, the Food Bank of Southern Tier, YMCA, to name a few. Again, I'm going to give a few passages. Whereas Ms. Rezak leaves behind many relatives and friends who loved and cared for her very much. We were impacted by her measured generosity, love, and support. Be it resolved, the members of city council of the City of Binghamton and the County of Broom of the State of New York, on behalf of all the residents of the City of Binghamton, pause and do hereby proclaim that this ninth day of December 2020 shall be in honor of Ms. Majida Rezak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Under approval of minutes, approval of the minutes from November 18, 2020. Councilman Strawn, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for unanimous approval of the minutes for the November 18...
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. On the public comment section.
Okay. Uh, we did not receive any letters, so I will not have any to read tonight. The number to call for public comment is 772-7101. Again, that's...
Go ahead, Grace, I'm sorry.
772-7101.
You have five minutes to speak. Please be respectful and no vulgar language, please.
Hi, you're calling for public comment? Okay, uh, name and address, please. Give me one second, I will put you on speaker. Okay, this is Tina Chronopoulos. Her address is 37 Laurel Ave. Uh, you may begin.
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me? Yes, um, so my name is Tina Chronopoulos. My representative on council is Focia Restamiti. I am following about a couple of things. I would like to reiterate my disappointment with the mayor and, I guess, the city council by implication for dragging his feet when it comes to transparency, particularly as regards to the police department. I've talked about this before. The stakeholder coalition that the mayor announced he would put in place in the summer. He hasn't yet done it. There are no, there's no information available online anywhere. And I'm just curious to know, why is this case? Why are you, why are you not even telling people what's going on or how they can get involved? I would also like to say that I watched the proceedings on Monday evening. And I was really taken quite aback by how some council members rose to new heights when it came to asking questions of the superintendent of the Joint Waveboard Treatment Plant, Elliot Wagner. So when you think back about how you handled the budget hearings, some of you asked almost no questions. You couldn't be asked, you couldn't be bothered to ask any questions. You were like, sure, sure, okay, this department, I don't need to ask questions here. That department, I don't need to ask questions there. And then suddenly, especially the Republicans, and I, yeah, I'm looking at some of you right now, were basically like asking this person all these questions that you couldn't be bothered to ask the police department or the fire department. You're asking about inventories. You're asking about hammers. It's almost as if you're trying to throw this person under the bus, right? Because there is this plan by the mayor in Johnson City and Binghamton to prioritize the management and operations of this treatment plant while maintaining ownership of it, which is really an uncool move, particularly when you think about the fact that over several years, the treatment plant has accrued unbelievable amounts of fines, sometimes up to $15,000 per month for dirty water leaked into the Chesapeake Bay watershed. And residents like me will have to shoulder some of that price tag, right? $275 million in debt accrued from bonding. So I'm just, I'm just really taken aback by how you suddenly can be bothered to ask detailed questions, but cannot be bothered to do your job when it comes to budget hearings. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, the number to call is 772-7101. That's 772-7101.
Grace, this is Shar. Can you read those, that number twice again into the record? We'll give another minute.
Yes, uh, the number to call is 772-7101. Again, it's 772-7101.
I'm gonna close the public hearing or the public comment section of the meeting. That's a non-preferred agenda. Would anybody like anything removed from the preferred agenda? Grace, you're not, can you start reading the preferred agenda, please?
Yes. Introductory ordinance 20-101, considered in finance, and ordinance authorizing lease of 22 and 24 New Street to Metro Interfaith.
Questions or comments?
Introductory ordinance 20-102, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Binghamton, Chapter 5, regarding records retention.
Questions or comments?
Introductory ordinance... Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. Go ahead, please.
Introductory ordinance 20-103, an ordinance to amend fiscal year 46 HUD annual action plan.
Questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Grace, please.
Introductory ordinance 20-104, an ordinance to amend the 2020 Binghamton-Johnson City Joint Sewer Treatment Facilities capital budget.
Questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Grace.
Introductory ordinance 20-105, an ordinance to amend the 2020 Binghamton-Johnson City Joint Sewer Treatment Facilities budget to increase appropriations for laboratory supplies.
Questions or comments? Okay, Grace.
Introductory ordinance 20-106, an ordinance to amend the 2020 refuse disposal budget to pay tipping fees.
Questions or comments on 106? Okay, Grace, move on, please.
Introductory ordinance 20-107, an ordinance to amend the 2020 mayor's budget for additional coronavirus expenses.
Questions or comments on 20-107? Okay, Grace.
Introductory ordinance 20-108, an ordinance to amend the 2020 finance budget to add a finance payroll specialist.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Grace.
Introductory resolution 20-108, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Binghamton Local Development Corporation for use of fiscal year 46 CDBG funding in an amount not to exceed $145,000.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Grace.
Introductory resolution 20-109, a resolution to amend the funding source for a loan to the Broom County Council of Churches.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Grace.
Introductory resolution 20-111, a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Chow for use of fiscal year 45 CDBG funding for development of a grocery store.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Grace.
Introductory resolution 20-112, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental number one agreement with Keystone Associates Architects Engineers and Surveyors LLC for geotechnical services for the new fire station.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, that's a non-preferred agenda. Oh, hold on a minute. So I'll take a motion to accept the preferred agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, Grace, roll call, please.
Councilman Skorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rastanetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strawn?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
That's a non-preferred agenda. Introductory ordinance 20-110, concerned finance. Councilman Strawn, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-110. It is an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Binghamton, Chapter 92, Mayor, Section 92-12, to establish the salary of the mayor for future terms.
Okay, before you have the question comments, if everybody recalls, this was a 1% increase starting in 2022 for four consecutive years. I'll take questions or comments on this?
Mr. President.
Councilman Skorinji, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity that we all had to discuss all this all at the last work session meeting. And I think it was a good discussion. I know we had two derivations of the plan that ultimately is before us. And I think everybody had a lot of great input, which I really appreciate. I had suggested a 0% increase for the first year, which would be calendar year '22. So while I respect everyone's position that they put forward and I appreciate the discussion, I'll be voting no on this piece of legislation this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other questions or comments?
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I mentioned this at the work session. I, I appreciate Councilman Skorinji's suggestion about a 0% increase. And I, I brought up at the work session that this, if we approve this budget or this salary schedule, the mayor could, you know, since we don't know what the financial landscape will look like, there could be, and almost certainly will be lasting impacts from, from the COVID pandemic that the mayor could forego the 1% raise for that first year. You know, I'm not saying that they have to or that they ought to, but I was, I believe we said that that option would be on the table. So I appreciate Councilman Skorinji's suggestion and feel like there is room for that to be implemented, even if we do approve this budget schedule tonight. Or, excuse me, salary schedule. It's the second time I made that mistake, the salary schedule.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other comments or questions? Okay, Grace, roll call, please.
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question being called?
Councilman Skorinji?
Nay.
Councilwoman Rastanetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
You know, now I think about the COVID situation that we're in and the unknown of next year. I'm gonna say name.
This is for 2022, just to clarify, Councilman Burns. It's not for next year.
Right, I'll say name.
Councilman Strawn?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's, sorry. Five i's, two n's, Skorinji, and Burns.
I heard 2110 passes. Introductory resolution 20-... Same number. It's the same number there, I don't know why.
Because this is a, because the prior one was ordinance and this is a res.
Okay. Introductory resolution 20-110, concerned finance. Councilman Strawn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution 20-110, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the way of Broom County for marketing and promotion of the 211 COVID...
Second.
Yes, Count, President Scanlon, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Oh, Councilwoman.
Hi there. I just would like to reiterate the facts of, we definitely have a communication barrier between what's happening in City Hall and being able to provide the CARES funding to those that would be eligible to receive such support. Someone is in the background, I hear. Someone is not muted. So, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to say that, yes, I support the need to utilize new methods to reach the target population. If you guys remember, I think Steve was here, and we only had a number, maybe about 50 applicants that were funded using the CARES money. And to this day, I talked to a resident that did not know they may be eligible. So definitely, additional methods need to be employed. My concern, however, is that we are allocating $16,000, although it is allowed based upon the HUD and the administration percentages, what have you. We are allocating $16,000 towards marketing. But if we remember when we supported our businesses, for example, because we received the businesses that applied, I think the max many of them could give was 1,500. And we know there are more businesses that may need additional assistance. There's more residents, more landlords that, that would like their tenants to apply. But I'm just concerned that we're spending $16,000 on it. I support utilizing new methods. I would like to, if I had my brothers, utilize some of the local agencies that we know have grassroots methodology to putting, I mean, just hand in hand in terms of getting the literature out and assisting people with applications. I would like to see those methods employed. But I did want to voice my dissent regarding the amount of money being allocated. I do look forward to looking at the number of applicants, so our total in versus those that are awarded, so we can look at the data and see what may have hindered the application process and/or the approval processes so that we can do our best to make sure we're supporting, again, the target population the most in need of our community. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo the sentiments of what Council... Uh, I'd like to echo the sentiments of what Councilwoman Riley was saying, that I think this is an important initiative. And certainly, some of the barriers to this, uh, to accessing this relief is lack of knowledge, that people just simply do not know that these, this relief and these programs are available. But I also want to echo the, the concern that we have the money. And I do, um, you know, I want to make sure that it is not only that people know about it, but it, it's accessible. You know, that the, the money is really going to people who need it, whether that be tenants who are struggling to pay rent or if it's, um, you know, people who have trouble accessing food in this time or childcare or, or any of those things, that we, we're not just throwing money at a problem, that we're making sure that this is, this money is accessible to people and used to bring relief, you know, not only in the, the fiscal sense of relief, but the emotional sense of relief as well, uh, because we do owe it to, to our constituents. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question will be called, roll call, please. Grace?
Councilwoman Skorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rastanetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, I know, uh, communication from council members, Grace, you know where we left off? Or does somebody else recall where we left off?
Um, I do not recall.
You started with me last time.
I did, okay. All right, I know, uh, Councilwoman Skorinji, please.
Nothing to report, Mr. President. Thank you.
And a Councilwoman Rastanetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. Uh, number one, a big congrats to those who completed the semester at Binghamton University. Um, it's been a crazy one for sure. Congratulations, you got through it. Might have a couple of exams left, but, uh, um, yeah, congrats. It wasn't an easy one at all. And, um, it's been, you know, a, a, a learning experience and an interesting experience on this end as well, um, teaching classes the way we have been this semester. But anyway, congratulations. Um, another big thank you to DPW. So those trucks out there today, we had a little bit of snow. And I'm sure this is just the beginning of our, for that season. So thank you for everything that you, that you do. Um, and just a quick note, a little reminder that, uh, this Saturday at Red Park, uh, from eleven to two, I'm hosting a Toys for Tots drive. It's a drive-through event, uh, to support the efforts police, uh, Binghamton Police Department has been doing for many years, uh, to make sure that kids do not go without toys during this holiday season. And all these toys do stay here in Broom County. And so I just wanted to throw it out there, and we would love to see all of you, um, stopping by and, uh, donating and putting a smile on the children's face. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Another Councilwoman Riley, please.
Thank you, President Scanlon. Um, I just want to again thank everyone for just their efforts during this time. This is a rough period, you know, regardless of if you're out there in, in the midst doing your job, serving the population, or if you're just dealing with the shifts that have occurred because of the COVID nineteen virus. Um, and what, again, I have to highlight is how our neighbors are reaching out to help one another. So I want to give kudos to everyone that supported the District Three Youth Winter Coat Drive. We were able to give twenty-six coats to children in and around Binghamton, because, believe it or not, children outside of the third district need coats too. So we received additional requests and we did what we could. Um, the original, uh, goal was to give fifteen, but I couldn't say no to parents that needed something. So thank you to everyone that supported that initiative. I want to thank everyone that's still contacting me on ways they can assist. And there are various agencies still taking donations of clothes for people. There was one, um, clothing center that ran out of clothes, you guys, because there's such a need out here. So, um, again, let's keep going, each neighbor helping neighbor, and, and let's push each other through till we get to the other side. As you know, I've been advocating for the flu vaccination, go out and have your shot. There are centers all over. Of course, you can reach out to your local pharmacist. Uh, they will be glad to administer the flu vaccination. And very soon, as we move forward, um, not only can you participate in the clinical trials for the COVID vaccination, but you will start seeing that roll out as well. So again, everyone remains safe, regardless of your belief about the vaccine. I've lost people because of COVID, so I don't want to take any risks. I don't want to be out there living risky, living dangerously. So please safeguard, employ the safeguards for me and everyone else I love. Um, and have a great holiday. Oh, no, we'll see you before the holidays. But for those that are celebrating Hanukkah and other holidays, happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Another Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I don't really have anything to report necessarily, but, um, I, you know, I feel like a lot of my correspondences have to do with COVID all the time. But, uh, you know, I hope everyone had a happy and restful Thanksgiving. And I encourage people to be smart about their, their upcoming holiday plans. You know, I hope that we can come together as a community and realize that if we can make some sacrifices now, that we can come out of this stronger. You know, if we keep our gatherings small, we keep wearing our masks, washing hands, limit our trips to essential trips, um, six feet apart, et cetera, et cetera, that maybe next year we won't have to take any precautions at all. Um, happy Hanukkah to all of, um, the residents who, uh, who are celebrating. Um, Hanukkah starts tomorrow evening, so I hope, uh, everyone who's celebrating has a, a happy holiday. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Another Councilwoman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, nothing really specific to report, but I don't know why, just, just kind of struck me. Just, I've been a lot of different parts of the city the last few weeks and, I don't know. Like, Councilwoman Rastanetti says, seeing DPW out there today, I've seen the street sweepers all over the place, all over different parts of the city. Um, saw the fire respond to a huge fire over in the fifth district, I think, last week. And it just struck me how much is going on and how many people it, it takes, uh, to, to, to make Binghamton work the way it does. And I just, I, so I want to thank the different departments and, and everybody that, that comes together. It's, it's not perfect, but I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. You see construction projects going on, the number five commons is moving forward. And, you know, the grocery store is getting ready to open over on the north side. And I just think, you see in the new parking garage, stuff like that, just kind of struck me that, that this last couple of weeks for a reason. So I'm thankful for all that and the, the hardworking people that, that we employ. And, and then they've been out there, obviously, in the midst of all that's been going on with this, the, the COVID and the pandemic. So I just want to thank, uh, all the departments and the hardworking people that, that are essential to making, uh, make Binghamton run. So I just want to thank, be thankful for them and, and as we move forward in this holiday season, that, uh, that they could spend some time and enjoy that as well, too.
Thank you, Councilman. Another Councilman Burns, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll just echo, uh, everybody's talking about the DPW. I saw them out there today, and I went past that fire, uh, in my district, uh, the other day as well. And, uh, the fire department had it. I mean, they, they, they were, they were on it, man. They were there. They were surrounding it. It was, felt very good. It felt, make you feel safe, you know? Anyway, um, I think my thing is, let's, um, shop local, you know? Our restaurants still need us to get, if you're not going out to the restaurants, let's get that food to go. We have some nice clothing boutiques. Go downtown Binghamton. You haven't shopped in downtown Binghamton in a long time? Go on down. Go to Boskov's, Boskov's. Help us out, help the city of Binghamton out. Go to Boskov's, and, uh, let's spend all our money here in Binghamton. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I don't normally do this, but I'm going to address the caller we had earlier. I don't recall her name. Um, I would hope that Mr. Wagner wouldn't take it as us getting on him at the work session on Monday. Certainly, there's a two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar investment by the city of Binghamton in the Bill Johnson City that, in my opinion, unless we're asking questions out there, we're not doing our job. And to ask a couple of questions about if the, if the plant, sewage tree plant is being maintained, that's just a routine question. That, that just makes sense when you invest that much money. So I'm not sure what she's talking about. I'm not sure she knows what she's talking about. But, um, we, we would not be doing our job unless we're asking questions about that large investment out there. So I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.